Good evening, everyone. We will call the meeting of the Breezy Point Planning and Zoning Commission to order, and we will review the minutes of July 11, 2017. Any questions or comments on those minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 11.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of that motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same? Motion passed. City Council A is on a report. Councilman Noronha.
We met last night. Last night was the first Monday, and today is the second Tuesday. Just some topics that came up in the open forum. I guess we have a skunk problem on Indian Hill over by the Breezy Point Resort area. So, some things need to be worked out, and Mayor's going to be reaching out on that one. Also in open forum, our fence standards were brought into question. There was a vendor who put up a chain link fence, and they were not too fond of it. They just had some vocalization on that. The other thing of mention is, we did have a $10,000 donation to the city requesting that be used for the police department, so we did accept that. And also, we did approve the miscellaneous zoning adjustments that the PNC did pass to the council as of last month. So, we passed that last night. I believe that's it, unless Joe has anything else that needs to add. Otherwise, if you have any questions, then certainly.
Any questions over to Councilman Noronha? Thank you. Before we proceed, at last month's meeting, I propose that we place a discussion of rentals in the R3 district on the agenda. Does anyone have a problem with adding that discussion of that to tonight's agenda?
No.
Jerry, Joe? I'm not sure how in-depth we can go, but we made a commitment that we probably need to follow through on in terms of stating that we would discuss it at this meeting. So, with your approval, we'll add it to the agenda under "other." We will then move to open forum number one. I should just remind everyone or tell everyone that during the public hearings, we will have an opportunity for public statements, and you'll be encouraged and welcome to make statements at that time. But if anyone would like to approach the microphone and make any comments, say anything, please feel free to do that now. This is public forum number one. If not, we'll close open forum number one and move to our next agenda item, which is a public hearing to consider a subdivision application, Copperwood addition to Breezy Point. I will open the public hearing for that application and ask if there is an applicant presentation.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Chad Connor, land surveyor with Woodset Smith Milting and his commission and staff. Yeah, basically, the application remains very similar to last month's presentation. I don't have a lot to add. We did, since the last meeting, have made some minor adjustments to the plat. The biggest one, or basically the only one being that we have contacted both owners on either sides at the lakefront, and the owners to the west side of the plat have entertained purchasing a small portion or triangle of property, which we have identified as Outlet A on the plat. So, basically consisting of a small amount of lake shore, but triangling back just to give them a little bit more buffer area there. So, that Outlet A will not be considered as a standalone parcel that will be attached to the owners to the west. With that change to the plat, we adjusted some of the lot lines to accommodate lot areas and lot widths and that type of thing. On your preliminary plat that you have, I think you have a preliminary and a final plat in your packets. On the preliminary plat, you'll notice, too, there was a question at one point of the building envelope on Lot 1, and was that realistic? So, we have represented a house and garage with attached garage on there. I think we're at like a 32-by-50 home with a 26-by-28 or 26-by-30 garage on there. So, it's pretty, you know, average size type structure. So, just showing that that is able to be represented within the building setback. Since our last meeting, the day after the meeting that, we actually received some correspondence from Soil and Water regarding the wetlands. They had some concerns that we had submitted them the drawings that you had last month, the preliminary plat drawing with the wetlands and the lot configurations shown. I think there was some confusion. We received the response. I'm not sure if you have that in your packets or not, but we received the response indicating that the Soil and Water had performed a desk review, which means they looked at the National Wetlands Inventory mapping and compared it to our plat and did some comparisons, and made some comments that they thought a further review of the wetlands was necessary. After that, I contacted the wetland delineator, Ben Meister, and he met with the Soil and Water staff at the TEP meeting following that. And I don't have any correspondence at this point. I reached out to them to ask for that, and I haven't received any updates. But from what I received from Ben, it sounded like Soil and Water staff wasn't, or they didn't understand that we actually had a delineation done. So, the delineation was actually identified on the last map as delineated wetland. I think they were concerned that we had just shown approximate areas. So, it actually has been delineated, and has been delineated twice previously to this application. So, we're confident that the lines we have shown on here are the actual true wetland delineation lines, so those are accurate. We will, however, as of speaking with staff before tonight's meeting, I'd be willing to entertain a condition to make sure that Soil and Water staff is comfortable with what we were showing and make sure that it's confirmed that that's there, but if that considers or involves a site walk or further, you know, detailed reporting or something like that, we'll be happy to do that. But after talking with Ben Meister about it, he said he thought that the staff member that he spoke with was satisfied that we had delineated the wetlands and taken care of that. So, if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to entertain those. So, not to get too long-winded here. But other than that, I think things remain the same. The easements are the same. The final plat that you received now this time, which we didn't have last time, is basically the formality that, you know, locks in the lot dimensions and lot lines and shows the wetlands on there that they're delineated, and shows the proposed ingress egress easement as well as the proposed city sewer easement that will be dedicated to the public for the city sewer, and the ingress egress easement will be private and will be held within lots 1 through 5. So, I guess with that, I'd entertain any questions, and I'll be happy to do whatever I can. Thanks.
Thank you. Jerry, would you have a staff review?
A short one?
Sure.
Okay. Pretty simple subdivision. Based on the review of the subdivision as submitted, the lots conform to the zoning ordinance. They conform to the R2 zoning. They're all 2 acres plus. The lots are proposed to be serviced by municipal sewer. Lot widths are 75 foot plus. Lots 1 through 5 are serviced by a private drive. Lot 6 is proposed to be entered on via North Lakeview Drive. There's agreement between staff and developer that wetlands are to be preserved and not be messed with. The, as Chad stated, there is a ongoing discussion between Soil and Water and WSN about the wetland delineation, and any differences of opinion will be resolved prior to the final plat going to the city council. We mailed notice to all property owners within 350 feet. We've notified the DNR. We've notified Soil and Water. We're holding a public hearing this evening, and the property owner, or the new property owner, has been corresponding and talking to the neighbors, which I believe is something that we encourage them to happen very early in the process, and I have to thank them for that. And with that, the staff would recommend approval. I did prepare a resolution that was in your package that proposed approval and recommendation to the city council. Both the preliminary and the final have to go to the city council for their final approval. So, we're just a recommending body when it comes to subdivision. The revised resolution that I put in your desk addresses the issue with the wetland boundaries and the delineation that would have to be completed prior to final approval by the city council. With that, I would open it up to the rest of the, for public comment.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll move right to public statements, public comments. If anyone would like to make a comment, I would just ask that you approach the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Tracy Donovan. We live at 9584 Lake Douglas Way, and I have one question which may have already been answered and one concern. The question I had was the access to Lot 6. There's nothing shown, but I understand you're going to have access from the city road in there. I don't know if you need to show that before you approve it or not. But the concern I have is, more so, is with Lot 6 having no lake access, is there any potential that the other five property owners could use Lot 6 as a storage lot? Build a storage building, store stuff on it? And that would be a concern I would express. So, maybe the zoning rules are such that it's not a concern, but there you go.
Could we address that quickly?
I'll try.
You want me to? That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy.
An accessory building in the R2 zone cannot be built without a principal structure being there first. So, the building a storage building on that lot is not something that would conform to our rules. We do get that request almost daily.
So, a home would have to be there before, or a home would have to be in the process of?
Yes.
Being built?
Yes.
Does that answer your question, Tracy?
It answers my question. It doesn't necessarily answer my concern.
Your concern? Concern being that a house could be there plus?
Little, small house in a big metal building.
Jerry, could I speak more on that?
The, the R2 zone addresses a minimum square footage that all houses have to be. It is, and I'm...
1,296.
They need to be at least 26 by 26, but the, if it's just a house without a garage, it needs to have a square footage of 1,296 square feet. If it's a house with a garage, it needs to be at least 975 square feet with a 22 by 22-foot attached garage. That's the standard in the, all R2 districts.
To follow that up, too, Jerry, an accessory structure maximum size is 1,200 square feet?
Two structures combined can be that, so if there were...
No.
Could put in a bunch of...
Nope. Accessory structure maximum size. You could have a bunch, yeah, you...
More than one with the total maximum square footage is what's set.
Yes, and that's what...
They could build up to a 1,280-square-foot accessory structure after the principal structure has been built. With a conditional use, it could go up to 1,600 square feet.
We would have to approve...
You would have to approve a conditional use permit, and again, it would have to go through a hearing. That's really the zoning of, the zoning requirement for this piece of property is R2, as are the adjacent properties along the lake. So, the rules are the same for this piece of property as it is for the other properties that are but the lake.
Is Lot 6 supposed to maybe be an outlot for everybody else in the home, a fifth of it?
I don't believe so, but, you know, I can't control what somebody's going to build.
What uses of it?
We can't control what somebody's going to buy. I would think, and I don't know, I have no idea what the purchase price of this property was, but in reality, it was pretty expensive when it was on the market. And to buy a piece of property for storage that seems a little far-fetched in this area because of the price of the land.
Is there any limitation on... That's the back lot, so, I mean, it's hard to imagine why there would be a great outlot for the ones who've got lake property. I think a lot of times they get into that is, if somebody sells an outlot that's on the lake, and then they have a whole bunch of lots at the back, and then you've got a dock configuration that's got about a dozen docks on it. That shouldn't be, if you put a dock in the woods, wouldn't be much good use, would it?
I think it would be a lot poor.
One further thing, as long as we're doing all of this. My packet seems to have two preliminary plot deals. Not that I know the difference between one and the other.
There really isn't a change. It's just one is cleaner.
This is preliminary, too. See, I've been tricked. Okay. I don't think that matters because they're almost the same.
They are the same.
Mr. Chair, the other common question that Tracy had was the driveway access.
Yes. Access typically is not shown on a plat. The, the understanding of the property owner that bought this piece of property, Mr. Copperwood, was that there was no access on Weaver Drive. That continues to be the motto that we've had all the way through the approval process and review process. They, the owner has stated in some of our meetings that the access would come off of North Lakeview, and that's, that's how we're operating. We wouldn't, that Weaver's Point Drive is basically a private easement, and they would need permission to get access off of there from the, I believe it's Mr. Smith. I don't think that's an issue, and typically, we don't show access on the, on the property because sometimes if you show it on the property, that means that's where it's got to happen, and people build on, shift their proposed buildings around on the site, and that access that shows on the, on the, on a plat would not necessarily work for the configuration of the design of the house.
And I would assume that Lot 6 would not have a driveway to that road because that driveway would go across the neighbor's property.
Correct. Mr. Chair, I think the way we've approached it is that's a back property. You don't have access to that road even though they're both there. We visited with Mr. Smith and, you know, approached him and asked him for access, and he just said that he would rather not see us access off the woods. So, we're okay with that one part of just planning to access or maybe not see.
We're not answering your question, Tracy, but are we coming closer to an answer?
Well, yeah. My concern is specifically a big metal building back there. There's storage shed for all of the other five property owners to put their toys and boats and what have you. Now, maybe they could make a rustic, natural, it would be less objection, but anyway, that's...
But if basically, they can't put an accessory structure there unless they have a house, then it would be like all of the other lots where every one of those property owners has the right to an accessory structure of basically 1,200 square feet, and they'd have to get permission from us for 1,600 square feet, which might be difficult.
Will there be covenants in this development?
At this point, there will be, well, a shared, you know, there'll be a shared names and access agreement.
Okay.
We have a copy of those.
Any other comments, public statements? Please state your name and address.
Tom Inckford, 307-51 Weaver's Point Road. When I was on the planning commission, developers brought in a plat for this property, and the main concern was the critical habitat area, and the DNR was very strict on that particular item. In fact, they would only allow one dock across there. Now, I don't know what the developer has planned, if they plan on having, you know, five docks in there. You know, that's, you know, fine with me, providing that the critical habitat remains and that I'd like to see a condition put on this that the DNR would have to approve the dock layouts. I'd like to see that as a condition. Other than that, I met with Joe today, and other than that, everything seems okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has there been any discussion of dockage with the DNR?
Yes. Mr. Chair, earlier up front, we, the management staff, when they suggested we retail to them, they, you know, after seeing the development as five standard residential lots, they didn't have any concerns. You know, it's not, you know, past applications were large, you know, multiple slip docking plans for, you know, duplex-type developments.
But in that, in that area, the docks would have to cross the wetlands?
Well, the docks would go, well, I guess, two questions then, is one is we're going to preserve the wetlands that are up front between the building sites and the lakefront, and then the lakefront, there's the, there's the upland that's along the lakefront, so that the docks would proceed from there. But I guess I would envision, you know, five individual docks just as though any of the other lots are out there, not anything more than that.
I have no problem with that as long as the critical habitat remains undisputed. I think that, talking to the DNR, they mentioned that the docks would have to cross the wetlands.
There may be some boardwalks across there?
Yeah.
Which would be permitted. We spoke with them, we had those, too, but there will be no filling of wetlands or any, any type of distributions to the wetlands with this application. If someone were to propose that, you know, downwind, they would have to approach the DNR for that approval. But at this point, no, there's no plans for filling wetlands or distributing any of
Other comments? Any other comments?
What's Outlet A? A little slower.
That was the property owner of the west end.
Okay.
That was sold?
And that was the part that was sold to a neighbor?
Yeah. The commission members will have an opportunity to make comments and ask questions as we move on to the approval of this. So, I will close the public hearing if there are no other comments. I will close the public hearing and move to the next agenda item, which is official action on the application of this subdivision. I haven't asked for questions because I knew we would have an opportunity at this point. Roger, do you have any questions or comments?
The only one I have is on Lot 1. How do you propose to get a driveway into that thing through that other wetland? The DNR would answer that, I would assume.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I guess we've identified and widened out Lot 1. If you noticed on the past application, it would be at 118 or 120 feet roughly. We now have 129, so if we widen that lot out a little bit, we do have 40 feet between the land and the side property line, so there should be...
Any other comments, questions, Roger? Peggy?
I don't.
Okay. Lance?
No.
Do you have any questions? Perhaps, Joe, you could talk just a little bit about the installation of city sewer?
Well, that's something the council will address. The developer was very conscious about the hill. You can see there's a rather steep slope, and rather than disrupt that slope, they're going to build the sewers below that. They didn't want to take out the trees or any of that kind of thing that would unstabilize that slope. The sewer will be a little, a little shallow, but they're going to bring in fill to bring it up to a reasonable depth. It'll also be outside of the driveway easement that'll serve all the properties, so that we'll have snow cover in the wintertime to help preserve that from freezing. All the lots will need to be served with a lift station because it'd be going uphill to the sewer, and so there won't be this trickle drip kind of thing going on in the sewer, which should help to prevent freezing problems.
Joe, our, our staff does the sewer design, right?
No.
No?
No, but we do approve it.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to review and approve it, yes.
So, the developer pays for the cost of the sewer to go in since it's private, right?
Correct. I mean, even if it was public, we would assess the cost to the property owners. They're going to pay either way.
I would entertain a motion. We do have a proposed resolution within the packet. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution TC 17-06.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion of that motion.
Just a point of clarity, the revised one where they talk about the review of the wetlands delineation? Just want to make sure that's what you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider a conditional use application number 2017-4 White Birch, Inc., to move existing dwelling from 30793 Ranchette Drive to Lot 4, Block 12, White Birch, 15. I will open the public hearing for that application and do we have an applicant presentation? Jeff?
May I first?
You bet.
Jeff Johnson, representing White Birch. I don't really have a whole lot to add to this. There was a letter included in the packet and there was a couple of things I wanted to maybe set straight on that. And the number one thing, letter is from Denise Keel and she references the house on 30793 and said numerous, numerous renters. Number one, I believe that to be not true. The original owners of that home, at least in my time, I'm certain it's maybe been owned by other people, but in my time here, which is 22 years, the resort has owned it for 22 years and when I started, they had just purchased it from the
I think, yes.
Red Barn riding stable.
This is the other one.
People who had owned it and worked horses there. And since we've owned it, we've tried a couple of different businesses there, but we've had one renter in the time that I've been here and that's Tony, the guy who is now trying to buy that home from us. And so I just wanted to make that clear, that we have not had numerous renters there, we've had one renter who's been there for a very long time. The other point on here, I do agree with them. It maybe is not had a proud homeowner for a while, but that was one of the issues that Tony wanted to, to take on was to be the owner of that home going forward. Tony is a very excellent carpenter and would take very good care of the house. As I mentioned in the packet, that he's got plans to site it, replace the windows. The roof will be replaced as well. It, and then I guess the final thing is, is it will not continue to be rental property as it is going to be Tony's home and he is planning to live there, buying the home from the resort on a contract for deed, so he doesn't have, I think he doesn't have very good credit to buy it, otherwise he would, but, so that's really the extent of what I wanted to mention and if there's other comments here, I may want to add something. Any questions?
Or questions of Jeff at this point?
The last time that property was actually used?
For?
Residents.
It's being used as residents right now. I mean, Tony's renting it, but
Okay.
Tony's been living there for about 15 years, give or take a couple. Before then, it's probably been 23 years when the Red Barn people were there.
Thank you. So we can carry on.
Yeah, in your plan of action, you say two years for windows to be replaced and why that long?
Tony needs time to, you know, he's got to come down with, come up with money for a down payment. He's got to re-site it. We're going to be getting a re-roof, but he's got to fix the pitch and so a lot of the carpentry work he's going to be doing himself to put in some sweat equity and so he's not going to be able to get everything done all at one time, so he just asked for two years. If it can't be two years, then, you know, as long as he can possibly let it be, but he was asking for two years.
And it's a full log home, right? So what kind of siding would he put on a full log home?
He wants to insulate it, so it's going to be an attractive one, similar to the neighborhood. I don't know if it's going to be a vinyl or a, I don't know what kind of siding he was planning on, yes, he didn't tell me that, but he would be covering up the logs.
Oh, okay.
He's going to put it on the outside.
And then another question was, because it's not size, it doesn't fit into the neighborhood that they want to put it into right now?
Pardon me?
Size wise, it's, it's undersized for that neighborhood, but the proposal is to add in addition to it? Was he going to take two years for that too?
No, that, that we would do when we move the house.
Basically, the porch just gets made into a kitchen?
The porch gets made into the kitchen and then there's a little center area there that we have to fill in to give it that 26 by 26 area.
Who's going to be doing that? Is that going to be White Birch?
The cement masons will do the, the cement work and then when the house gets in there, we'll get that taken care of right away.
Okay, but that's my question, is, is White Birch going to be hanging on to it until that time or is it going to be the new owner who's doing all of that?
White Birch is doing the sewer, the well, putting the house on there. Obviously, we want to try and minimize the expense to Tony on the mortgage and so we're going to want to have him do as much as he can, but we can't let it sit for forever on that one, so I don't think we have a, I think it's this year it'll be built to that 26 by 26. When that foundation is in there, it's all going to be there.
So when it's moved, there's just going to, it's going to be put on a cement block foundation? Because there was a mention in there someplace that they would like a walkout.
Correct, walkout basement.
Okay.
So it's on, it's on a cement foundation and there'll be a walkout on it.
Jeff, when would the move occur?
Well, we were trying to get it done about two weeks ago.
Oh.
Then I found out about the CUP that I had to have.
Okay.
I assumed it was not a concern because it was already within the city limits and we're just moving it within the city limits and I was mistaken on that, so we've already been delayed.
So soon as this process?
Soon as we get it cleared up and ready to go.
Okay, good. Any other questions, Jeff?
One. Yes, see Representative White Birch, are you proud of the way that building's been maintained?
I would say it could use a coat of stain on it.
Did I look at the wrong building? Is this the one by that Red Barn?
Yeah, but it's not the Red Barn, it's the house. So it needs a coat of stain on it and it needs a new roof, which it's getting.
Okay, then. I don't think that's very well maintained and
Are you talking about the yard or the house?
The whole property.
Because you didn't say that, you asked me about the house.
Yeah, well, the house, I didn't.
The house is very solid and it's in that, in that regard, the house.
But I mean, the inside, the outside doesn't look very solid.
The building inspector inspected it, the movers inspected it, they've all said it's a very solid house and it'll move just fine.
How's it getting positioned on the lot? I mean, is this?
There's a drawing of how it's being positioned.
Yes, sir?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I see it now.
This is current resident, are the horses his?
No.
Is all that, like they're building a shed behind it? I don't know if that's moved yet or not.
The shed?
Yeah.
That's moving to the new location.
Okay.
That's Tony's. He's building that on his own force, some of the storage that you see laying around there.
Okay. So once the house was moved, what will happen to the property?
The Red Barn property?
Yeah.
We received, I think we received approval, didn't we, for the
Last week, yeah.
The market, marketplace that we want to do there. We got a gas station and I think three or four other buildings there.
No, I'm just wondering, will you tear down the Red Barn and move the horses someplace?
I'm sorry you didn't ask that question.
Oh.
Yeah, the horses have already been given an eviction notice.
What?
And the barn, we're offering it for anybody that really wants it. Otherwise, we'll probably scavenge a few of the nicer beams that are in there and then the contractor said they can just chip it up.
Thank you, Jeff.
Did you want it?
No.
Thank you.
Chair, would you like to go through a staff review with us?
Basically, I think Jeff has touched on most of it, but the dwelling is currently located at 30793 Ranchette Drive. It's proposed to be relocated at Lot 4, Block 2, White Birch 15, which is, I believe, on scenic overlook. The applicant has submitted an application for a conditional use to move the existing dwelling onto the vacant lot. The property is zoned R2. According to the R2 zoning in, in the, of a code, a used structure moved onto property is a conditional use. That is the purpose of this, this hearing is to consider the conditional use. Typically, conditional uses are permitted uses with conditions. The structure proposed is, to be moved today is an L-shaped structure. It currently does not conform to the terms of the R2 zoning. The applicant has stated that he is, or the intent is to put a couple of additions onto the, the building to bring it into conformance with R2 standards, which is a minimum square footage standard and it has to have a portion that's at least 26 by 26. That's the, the 26 by 26 proposed addition or the condition is, prompts the, the addition to the middle of the building to get to that dimension and the, with that proposed addition and the addition or enclosing the porch and making it into a part of the, the house itself brings it into conformance with the, the ordinance. There, there are some findings that the commission needs to go through in order to figure out whether this condition is something that you can support or not. I think staff, from our standpoint, if, if all the things are done that they say they're going to do and bring it into compliance with the ordinance, we would not have a reason to deny the conditional use. Staff does have a concern, as was expressed before, just based on the past history of the upkeep and what's going on around the existing building. We also have a concern about a two-year timeline to get something done that may never get done. And speaking frankly, that is a concern of ours. It will be a concern of the neighbors and it should be a concern. I have included in your packet pictures of some of the adjacent properties and I have also included pictures of the existing property. I think the, the challenge that the, the commission might have is finding that the, the building is compatible with the neighborhood. And did I say that basically just because of the age of the structure? The age of the structure is 1965 and the, the adjacent structures in the area are 2000, near 2000 plus, so they're much newer. There also came in later, after this packet came out, was a letter from Les in Sioux, Hite?
Yuradak.
Yuradak, okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
And I did include that on your, on your desk for your bruisal. With that, I think you probably need to open it up for a public comment.
We will do that. Anyone who would like to make a comment or statement, please again approach the microphone and state your name and address.
Thank you very much. I'm Steve Erhardt from Oconia, Minnesota. I'm here on behalf of my mother-in-law, Barry Born, owns the property, bought his investment years ago. I'm trying to get a handle on this to understand a little better. She owns the property at Lot number three, Block 6, White Birch 15. I'm not exactly sure where that is in correlation to this project, but it's got to be in close proximity, obviously, because we were invited to the meeting, so if you could help me on that, I'd be grateful, but my concerns would be, I guess, taking of this property, moving it over there, are there any variances that are issued or pending regarding getting this property to accept that building coming in, like intrusion onto the property lines of somebody else? Secondly, as I talked about earlier, was, was the building itself being up to somewhat of a level of enhancing it to accept other newer homes that'll come in to, to kind of blend together, you know, and so forth. I guess are, are concerns we have on our end. Maybe you can help us out on that and let me know if there's any variances and how close in proximity we are to this, this particular location.
Jeff, we can address those. Is it one of these pictures?
I can, I can address the zoning part right away and typically, when, when you folks get a notice, there's a, on the back of the notice, there should be a, a circle that would show you, if I could have the notice. First of all, there are no variances necessary for this house to be located on the lot. We have a site plan that was prepared by a professional land surveyor that will show that it meets all setbacks.
It said Block 6.
We don't have the blocks on here, that's the problem.
Well, that's okay, it doesn't help us on the map.
I can go and get that real quick.
Lot 3, Block 6. Well, Kathy is, is doing that, why don't we go to another, another comment and we'll come back, I promise. Would someone else like to come up?
Yes, sir. Jason Gore, I'm from 7542 Scenic Overlook, a lot adjacent to Jeff's proposal here. Just want to thank you guys tonight for having us. I've got a copy of this too, I'll pass out to you guys, I should have sent it ahead of time, apologize. Wife and I have lived on that lot and our house since 2005 and honestly, we feel it's, it's obvious anybody that owns that lot has a right to develop it within parameters or think codes and ordinance. We think having an open lot next to our house would be a, a pipe dream and obviously not realistic, so we expect at some point there might be a development to there when we bought it, but our concerns are expressed in three, I guess. Number one, the age of the structure. I called and talked to Jerry last week too and it seemed like it was built in the 60s or 50s, he told me, I thought, but I heard 65 tonight. Either way, we're talking a 50 or 60-year-old structure, I mean, you guys have addressed that. Compared on average to the people I've talked to on the street, 12 to 15-year-old homes, I don't think it conforms. I mean, I've even consulted with a good friend that owns a realty company in Lakes Area and he said he'd have issue with that next door, just on the devaluation of the close proximity properties. And I think a point in that is that it's a really open lot and it can be seen from scenic overlook and it can be seen from Ranchette, kind of as it is now, sitting out in the open, so that kind of concerns us, the, the repair it's in. And that brings me to my second point, is the aged exterior, the cedar shaped roof, I believe it is, it looks real faded and worn and it sounds like it needs to be repaired. I don't know what the assurances are, when it'll be repaired, if it's after the fact, how long are we going to be witnessing construction on that lot, as in the upsizing to conform with the code? If someone were going to be building there, I think they would have to comply the day they build, you know, before it gets inhabited, so that's a concern of ours. You know, I couldn't tell if it's driving by, I don't want to get too snoopy, if it's full log or log siding, but if it's log, I just know when they separate and haul that thing down the road in two pieces, are there going to be integrity issues there? I just know how they have to move it, I'm not sure it holds up, I'm not a builder, but that'd be a concern of mine too, especially in the roof. And if we don't have a definition of what those exteriors and roofs need to be, how do we expect the existing homes to comply with that too? I've done some research on ordinance, but the third one, being a rental property, I know we all have a right to rent our house and Jerry explained a little further, if they're not rented more than, say, four times a year- If they're not rented more than, say, four times a year, they're not considered commercial. So I'm not comparing it to a commercial rental. But it happened at our neighbors. They sold off. They moved to Colorado. They didn't sell their home, I should say, but they're renting now. And I don't think a year has gone by in three different renters where we've had the lawn mowed on a regular basis. Right now, it's shitting high out there. I've seen the septic has never been maintained, one time in 12-plus years. We recommended to the owner and called, and I'm just wondering if we're hearing cost constraints and dreams about how it may be or what the agreement to work this off will be, how well these additional costs can be covered then? Because I saw a lot of landscaping had to go in our lot. That was scraped off to build the roads. So essentially, we have Class 5 gravel and rock below. Any dirt that's growing grass for us has been hauled in, and we had a hard time with that. We didn't do that twice. So that was a concern of ours. Long-term maintenance. I'm not trying to be a bad neighbor. I'm sure I'll get along with whoever moves in there, but when it happens, I want them to be in the right situation, too, so it's fair and balanced. And I just referenced ordinance. You can see in here, but the verbiage I underline, basically, Page 88, 89 of 169, I think it's in your updated zoning ordinance, that talks about property itself must be preserved and adjoining properties protected. In Section 2, it says standard quality impairments such as the materials used, yada, 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 would depreciate the values of neighboring adjoining premises. That's what I for said. At Point 3, there's landscaping of lawns, hedges, bushes, shovel kept from becoming overgrown enough slightly. Like Larry, you were setting some questions that way as a history. I don't have as much history, 12, 13 years here, but I hear that. So I want to make sure that we're getting in the right situation, because at some point we might want to sell our lot, too. Yeah, I just want to respectfully thank you guys. I did know that White Birch homes. I might be wrong here. It's my own research on the county GIS, but 55 or so, you know, half acre to one acre parcels in the city. So I'm wondering with the screening and the close proximity, are there better alternatives to consider that? I know there's probably an investment planned, so I apologize. But I just want to make sure it fulfills all codes and standards, but also takes consideration of pre-existing norms. So thank you.
Thank you. When you look at the building, when we talk about the building.
No. No, thank you.
Yeah, I'm here on the White Birch. We live on that hillside pass. We got that.
Thank you.
I speak pretty low. I can't hear you guys out there, but we live on the corner of Hillside Pass, Scenic Overlook, and Ranchette Drive. I got that corner piece in there.
I'm sorry. We need to make sure we get your name correctly. Could you state your name one more time?
Darrell Hanson.
Darrell Hanson.
It's on the list there. It's spelt different. Nobody spelled it right, so I'll spell it. It's D-A-R-L.
Okay. Thank you.
I personally think that that house that wants to be moved over there would take away from the value of the property out there. Just looking at that structure up there, I don't think it would look very nice in the community that we're in down there. Pretty new houses down there, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We were going to get back to this gentleman's question. Do you want to come up one more time?
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe you could just restate it to refresh our memory.
Steve Erhardt from Oconia, Minnesota, be on behalf of Betty Born. The property, I guess, we would be impacted, not in the sense of right next to it, but across the street from it, is where we're going to be located. That's where we're at. But it is in view of that. And I guess our concern, as others are, is the structure itself and being of the age it is and so forth, and all these lots to be developed yet in the near future or the future of houses that'll be done, current, you know. So I guess for property value sake and everything else, I think the stipulation should be that it needs to be brought up to a level where it's going to be moved to where everybody else is, in the sense to keep the values of everybody else's residence up. So it's our concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Les. You probably have a copy of my wife's letter that she sent in. I would just have to say, being a builder myself over the years and teaching construction and remodeling and doing different things, it's hard to take a building like this and make it look aesthetically right, even if you make some changes, because the original structure of the building, you'd have to change completely to match the typical construction of the houses that are in the neighborhood. So my wife and I felt, too, that it would be hard to make it a fit with what we typically see throughout that whole residential area, and that would affect our property values and how people would perceive that neighborhood. And again, the time construction, you know, two years, you know, when's it really going to be done, you know? Do we have any guarantees for that? Is it going to be an ongoing project where there's construction materials always there and all sorts of things taking place? Or are we going to see this finished on time? You know, all those types of questions that we're raising here. We do think it would be a detriment in the long term to the neighborhood and our property values. Take that into consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I will close the public hearing and move to the next agenda item, which is official action on the conditional use application. Do commission members have questions, comments at this point? Questions of any of the people who made public statements or staff?
I was going to say, do we ever do site visits?
We just move it.
Is the barbecue on?
And I agree with the people, the two years seems to be excessive. And I know Jeff needs that time, but, you know, a permit's a year, correct?
Typically, a permit is good for a year.
And you have to renew it every?
If they're not making progress, we make them actually issue a new one, but the real enforcement part of that is, becomes a real issue.
Exactly.
As far as how do you do it? And do you slap a fine on it every day? And if you slap a fine on it every day and the applicant is strapped for cash anyway, you're really not accomplishing anything.
Yeah, I have concerns. I think just based on the condition of the rental property as it is right now, I realize it's not owned by the gentleman who will be purchasing it, but renters can still take care of their property. And I don't, I've driven there several times to look at it. I drove today over to look at the site. I think, you know, a house could be moved there and have it look okay, even this particular house, but I haven't seen anything in the history so far that would lead me to believe it's necessarily going to happen. And I think two years is way too long to wait and for the neighbors to have to wait, so.
I don't think that house, no matter what you do to it, can be compatible with the neighborhood that they want to move it into. It's going to distract from the values of these people and certainly distract from their enjoyment of living in their house. Past history says that you can say you're going to fix it, but like, they sure haven't yet. So I don't think they've got a history that says anything you're going to do to it's going to be satisfactory to the neighbors that are asked to accept that house.
Carol?
I agree with Larry. I feel like if he was going to make improvements, he could have started by improving the property that he's on now, not necessarily putting money into the house, but keeping the property itself better looking. And nothing says that after they move the house, he would, you know, make more of an effort to improve it. Plus, there would be the cost of improving the house, plus putting in a septic system. I mean, it just sounds like this person may not be in a position to take care of all the necessary improvements and things he's going to have to do financially.
Thank you. Right, any comments?
I have a few, and perhaps staff could answer this. If a similar home wanted to be constructed on the property tomorrow as a new construction, could they build it? Granted, the roof pitch is wrong, but could they build it as is?
Yes.
As it's being recorded.
Yes.
So they could do a log home, correct? Shaker shingles, but it would just be a new, newly built. So to say that the material doesn't conform with the neighborhood, that might be an accurate statement, but if somebody were to buy that property tomorrow and want to build said home, they have every right to do so. Permitted? Do we need a conditional? Since it's log, it's an over-the-counter building permit, correct?
As long as it meets state building codes.
State building codes. So with Mr. Sandusky being out there, our building inspector, calling out the items that needed to be addressed, essentially moving the home as it is with the roof being redone, it does meet building standards, which would again be a permitted use, over-the-counter. I agree that the maintenance has not been up to par with it, but I just wanted to make that point clarified. The plans of reciding, which according to applicant would match existing structures that's appealing, but again, the applicant that's asking to move the house will not be the homeowner. It'd be a different story if the potential new homeowner was here and giving us those dedications. Again, this is a permitted use to move it with conditions. So I advise the commission here to take that into consideration, that this is permitted as long as it meets all standards, but you may want to put conditions that instead of the timetable as presented of two years, just throwing out suggestions. I know it was brought up to applicant that financials were concerned, but perhaps those items could be all addressed, part of the conditions that are done for certificate occupancy.
Thank you. Good points.
Can I get a clarification?
Yes, sir.
How the ownership is with this? Is this a renter that's fixing this up to buy or will give a close to section?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff. My understanding is it's owned by White Birch Corporation right now, and after the move and some improvements done by White Birch, the proposition is that it would be sold to the individual who's renting it now.
That is correct.
And he's doing the good portion of the construction work there?
We have a, some of you have seen, we've got a very good roofing crew. Roush Schmidt Roofing has been doing all of our roofs from Father's Day Storm from 2016, and that roof has been approved to be replaced. And so that roof will be taking, will be taken care of after the move. There's no point in doing it now. We want to.
And after the pitch correction?
Correct. And insulation. So after those things are taken care of this fall, then the roof will be re-roofed. And so that's one of the items that would be done yet this year. The majority of the costs we've looked at, again, cut me off if I start to ramble here and you don't want me to talk anymore, but we needed to upgrade the plumbing and the electrical, and we have bids for that from Larry Blazer Plumbing and Carl Moon of Moonlighting, and those things are going to be taken care of. The roof is going to be taken care of. The additions will have to be taken care of immediately. And so then it just leaves the siding and some of those type of things for later, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, does White Birch own that piece of property now? Or are you buying it?
Yes, we own it.
The new property, just to clarify?
Both.
Yeah, the, yes, where you want to put the house.
Yes, we own both.
So when they move it, they move it two pieces?
Correct. And we've moved.
All those bigger stuff moved?
We moved the old, where the bank is now, there was a house there. We moved that one. And in fact, that's Bob Spieso's son, Tom, has that. I think that's on Shady Trail. And one of the other Montana log homes, we moved probably 15 years ago to, I think it's Bluebird, and that was David Spieso's home for a while. And we moved one, another Montana log to, I want to say it's back on the other side of the chapel in that area. It's been a long time since that one was moved, but I think I've moved three since I've been here.
Jeff, do you know of one on Airport, Cliff Mueller's? Was that a move from one of those? I know it's a log one, I believe it was moved, but I don't know if it had anything to do with you.
I don't know anything about anything Cliff's done. I haven't worked with Cliff on moving houses.
Does White Birch own a number of properties around Breezy?
Yeah. Too many, as a matter of fact. I think we own, in White Birch 15 and 16, and maybe a few oddballs here and there. I think we've got 90 to 100 lots we're still trying to sell.
Why did you select this lot for this house?
Tony's significant other doesn't drive, so she takes a golf cart to work, and she works for me at the campground. And so there's the proximity. If we had one on the other side of the highway, we would have looked at that first, but this was a proximity to the campground scenario for us. There is a lot right across the street that's treed, but from the standpoint of wanting to do the basement, this just looked to be like a better lot. You can put in trees and those kind of things to help screen the house as much as you need to. And so that's part of the plan we wanted to do, and it just played better for that house, having it walk out. With the basement, again, that's going to help with the clutter that's there. Now he doesn't have a basement. He's got stuff stashed in the two vehicles that are sitting there as storage. That's why he built the shed and for everything to go into, and then, you know, eventually he's going to get a permit and build a garage.
The inside is rough with the outside looks? Or just?
It's still the same inside from the '70s.
Oh.
I mean, I don't judge.
Yeah. So when they're doing the mechanical, they'll tear the inside off?
Anything that gets removed, yeah.
Thanks again, Jeff. As usual, as we consider a conditional use permit, I take you through the findings and conditions, and I think that's really important, especially tonight. So I'm going to do that as quickly as I can with your patience. We must meet the following conditions in approving a conditional use permit. The use or development is an appropriate conditional use in the land use zone. The use or development with conditions conform to the city's comprehensive land use plan. The use with conditions is compatible with existing neighborhood.
That's a no.
The use with conditions would not be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, decency, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, or prosperity of the city. And the following conditions need to be considered by us. The conditional use shall not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property. I'm going to do a little bit of paraphrasing here. The conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property. The conditional use will not create excessive additional requirements at public costs for public facilities and services. The conditional use will promote and preserve a northwest corridor of the community. The conditional use will have vehicular approaches to the property which are so designated as not to create traffic congestion. Adequate measures have been taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Adequate measures have been taken or will be taken Adequate measures have been taken or will be taken to prevent or control offensive orders, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, so none of these will constitute a nuisance. The conditional use will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of natural scenic or historical, uh, feature or major significance. The conditional use will promote the prevention and control of pollution of ground and surface water. Those all need to be either met or considered, uh, by us in taking this action tonight. I would entertain a motion.
To do what?
A motion to either approve or deny this application.
I'll make the motion to deny this application.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second to add motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion of the motion.
Part of the logic in all of this is, is the owner of the property, who's been the owner for a number of years, is also the applicant who's now saying, okay, we haven't done it before, but trust us this time. Now we're going to move it. We're going to really fix it up nice. The history isn't there. We considered that one at a time years ago where, a couple of years ago, where a party wanted to buy a house for rental and they had a bad history and we considered that bad history in denying that application. A condition you could make is maybe, maybe the next time around is the guy who wants to buy it, he'd buy it first and then he make the petition to move the property. I don't think White Birch is in a good position to, uh, make a bunch of promises now that have not been kept in best. That place could have been kept a whole lot nicer than it is now. I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood.
Roger. More discussion.
Michael had a good point then. You know, if you go in there for a permit, you get permitted for that house, but it's 65 years old and you've built it out of 65-year-old material, windows, et cetera. I don't know. It's not too good. It's the way I'm thinking of it.
Pete?
Yep.
Carol?
No. Nothing.
My own comment would be, um, you know, to, to obviously find proper findings of, of why the conditional use is being disallowed. One thing that you could always, and this is me probably spitballing, is to consider is for an approval, but making all the requirements that they suggested of getting the siding redone, the windows redone, the roof redone, all that done before the certificate occupancy to match the surrounding neighborhood to the current owner, which is White Birch, which is the applicant. And if they accept those conditions, means that they will do that at the time that they move it. Did I say that right? Does that sound right?
Okay. You did okay.
So it's an opportunity, but again, I'm not a voting member, just.
You know, it may be helpful if you reviewed the proposed resolution for approval with the conditions that were stated and maybe there's something there that doesn't work for you, but, um, it's at least something to consider.
We do have a motion on the floor, however.
That's true.
Yeah, we'll dispose of that, that motion after sufficient discussion. I'll, I'll just go through the membership one more time. Roger, any other comments?
Mister Chair?
Joe?
If you're going to do a denial motion, you should also include the reasons why the denial is being done. And may, might I suggest that, uh, it's the, the age of the structure, the age of the adjacent structures. The roof pitch does not comply and it is not compatible with the neighborhood.
Let me ask the maker of the motion if, uh, if he would consider amending that motion to include what Jerry just said.
Yes. In other words, um, the fact is, is that the property, no matter what you do, it's what you're, you're, you've got an age issue. You've got, uh, an issue of it's not compatible with the neighborhood that he would be moving to. That house moved in there would, would be, uh, uh, a, an issue with the values of the properties in the neighborhood. You know, like I say, it's a, it's a, I think it's a hardship for all the other neighbors to have this project go forward. Is that enough reason or do you need more?
We want to be clear about this motion. So perhaps Kathy or Joe could read back what we have so far?
Well, I think Jerry had stated that I'll let him restate.
Commission finds that the, that the use or the conditional use app is not compatible with the existing neighborhood and the proposed move structure is not compatible because it is the adjacent dwellings were built in the age of 2000 to 2017. The proposed moved-in structure was built in, in 1965. The roof pitch on the move structure does not comply with the 612 pitch that is necessary. And I would add another one that, that I think I heard a couple of times from, um, the commission members that, um, the history of the applicant with this existing structure, um, is not good. The, the existing structure hasn't been maintained in the past. I guess the question is, why wouldn't it be maintained today?
Is that wording satisfied?
Satisfied, I think Jerry's-
The second, okay.
My, my question to staff would be, just to be devil's advocate. If the application and, and, um, the building inspector says that the roof has to be done and that the application said it was going to be done, can that still be a reason for denial?
I think so.
Okay.
I, I would, uh, the other thing that is in this that, that could be is that the, um, time that was being proposed was too long to, to make it happen. I don't know exact, the exact wording for that, but.
I want that added, right?
Yeah, I know you did add it.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, I will take that motion or bring that motion for a vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion passed. We will move to the next agenda item. My packet all, who's that?
I, I've got issues already.
I've been shuffling here. A public hearing to consider ordinance 17-4, an ordinance adding floodplain management to the zoning ordinance. I will open the public hearing to consider this addition to the ordinance and ask Jerry or Joe or both to give us a staff review.
The, uh, flood insurance and, and the flood insurance program has been around for many, many, many years. And in approximately 2011, uh, the FEMA started the process of getting, uh, a flood insurance study done for Crow Wing County and all the communities or the jurisdictions within Crow Wing County. That, uh, process was suspended in about 2013 because of budget constraints. And last year they refocused and found some new budget money and, uh, Crow Wing County was actually studied and mapped for flood potential. The flood insurance, uh, study was done. It was, uh, presented to all the jurisdictions in the county approximately six months ago for review. Uh, that review has been done. I believe, uh, Crow Wing County, the, their flood insurance, uh, ordinance goes into effect, I believe, August 15th. Uh, most of the jurisdictions around us have already approved it in, in ordinance to adopting the flood insurance study. The, the crux of the flood insurance study is it, it identifies area within all jurisdictions that have a potential of flooding or have a one in a 2% chance of flooding. Basically looks at low-lying areas and it looks at a lot of riparian areas. Breezy Point's a little different because we really don't have any riparian areas or the, uh, the rivers and the, and the streams that, that tend to fluctuate a lot. So the, the map for Breezy Point basically follows the, pretty much follows the, the shoreline of Pelican and Osawama Key. There are a few areas in Breezy that, um, the properties are, are affected by the, the flood insurance study or the, the potential of flooding. Uh, the good part about it is even though they're, they have potential of flooding, if you participate, if the community participates in the program, they can get flood insurance. Today, if you had one of those suspect properties and they were to try to get a mortgage on it and/or, um, just wanted to get flood insurance to ensure their, their properties, they couldn't do it because the city does not, uh, participate in, in the program. One of the other things it does is that it gives you a guideline to say when something new is built that is in that 2% area, that there's a minimum elevation that the first floor has to be at, which is typically OHW plus two, two feet above the OHW. So there are some guidelines for, for new construction and/or reconstruction of, of some of those, uh, areas that have potential to be hazardous. The, the big map is, is behind you is the, the, the blue thing back there that, uh, basically tells you what the, where the, the boundaries are. That really is tough to, to tell without getting on a computer and figuring out exactly where that property is. We did, uh, ask the engineers to give us some, the, there were some potential, um, properties that have issues or could have issues or that will need insurance. And we've given you those in the, in the 11 by 17s. There are, most of them, the three pages are in Ossie. They're all on the south side of Ossie, which doesn't surprise you because you can walk around Ossie and you, you're in the sponge area. The, the Pelican area that's affected a little bit is from North Lakeview, or Lakeview Drive, south about four or five properties. And it comes right up close to the Marina and the Dockside Resort, which you can see on the second, second page. But that is kind of a quick overview of, of the program. The, um, again, the advantage is that anybody that wants insurance can get it. They can get it at a rate that's affordable. It probably is not today. And, uh, most mortgage companies take a look at that. If anybody is participating, they, they look at it and some of them even require it, depending upon where it's located.
Thank you, Jerry. Joanne has a comment.
Lost our audience.
Public statements. If not, if there are no public statements, I will, uh, close the public hearing and move to the next agenda item, which is, uh, for us to take action on recommending this ordinance change to the city council. And I would entertain a motion.
I would move, it'd be moved to city council.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Discussion of that motion. Did you get all your questions answered, Roger?
Yeah, well, I, okay. Also seen some places, there's only five properties in the city.
No, it was Peggy and Larry.
Larry, Carol, Mike?
No questions.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed.
Always one of the easy ones.
The next one might not be. Uh, discussion of, uh, the camper story. We did spend some time last month discussing this. Committed ourselves to continue to, uh, discuss it, discuss it. We, we have a, a memo from Jerry in our package, correct?
Yes, you do.
Yes. Comments? Discussion, especially on, uh, the memo from Jerry.
The question is, is our ordinance wrong and need correcting versus this one particular property? By the way, it is being used as a temporary camping site today. I drove by, I saw the on and out, so they're using it. I didn't, I don't get by it often enough to say, are they particularly in their 14 days or not, but.
I, I look at it just about every day that I come to Breezy Point and I would say that they're approaching their 14 days.
But- 14 continuous, isn't it 30 days total? Yes.
And I drive by it every time I leave the house and you're, you're right on, Larry.
Okay.
I guess the issue is, they are allowed to camp there, but the issue is whether that's becoming a guest house, which I don't believe they have permission for.
Well, it doesn't meet the definition of a guest house, but it's being used as a temporary camping site. And, uh, our ordinance says that up to 14 days you can do that. There's been, there's only one person who complains about it. I don't know that we want to deal with too much of this for, uh, one item where, and again, he, he did put a license plate on it, which was required. Other than, like I say, it's, it can be a real nuisance to try to monitor how much they use it. I don't know that, uh, it's as big of an issue certainly as we discussed earlier tonight.
Can someone refresh my memory of, of the ordinance that impacts this particular issue, the 14 days?
It's, it's under, it's probably under the definition of limited camp.
Yes.
For, as I recall, it's 14 days continuous or 30 days in a calendar year.
And that can be for any property. That has nothing to do with the one acre property, which is a storage issue.
Correct.
Did you look at, um, changing the definition or?
Did you look at changing the definition or defining exactly what a guest house is? Is it going to be considered a guest house?
I'd say since it's licensed, that kind of took away guest house.
Let me, let me give you the wording for the temporary camping or limited camping. It's temporary camping on a residential lot for a period of up to 14 days at one visit or cumulative of 30 days in one calendar year.
Okay, 14 days is continuous and one, okay.
What's the other one you wanted, Carol?
Guest house.
Well, Mike said though, if it has a license, it can't be considered a guest house.
I suggested.
And here's, here's the definition of guest quarters. Dwelling guest quarters. A structure used as a dwelling unit that may contain sleeping spaces and/or kitchen and/or bathroom facilities in addition to those provided in the primary dwelling unit on a lot, depending upon principal structure for primary utilities, services, entrance, parking, and access and not for rent or lease.
At the beginning, that did not say a permanent structure, did it?
A structure used as a dwelling unit that may contain.
So, it doesn't say a permanent.
It doesn't say it has to be a permanent structure. And when we first started talking about that, one is, that was one of the things that I kind of thought might work is that we have this minimum size for structures of 26 by 26. If in fact, this was a dwelling, if in fact, that camper was a dwelling unit, maybe we should be adjusting the guest quarters to say they have to be at least 26 by 26 and they can't be over 750 square feet. That might solve the problem of it being a guest quarters.
It doesn't solve the problem of the camping.
But he's camping, it's limited camping until he goes past that 30 days.
Could you, again, our new flood plan includes a recreational vehicle definition. Could we add that definition into our ordinance? Add into camping that they can be tenting or using a recreational vehicle? And then also add in guest dwellings that it cannot be a recreational vehicle?
Well, I think, I think saying that a guest quarters can't be a recreational vehicle, I think that's, that's pretty easy. You still get back to the camping and the limited camping.
So, a motor home would be okay? No. If you have a 36-foot motor home set in there instead of a 36-foot camper?
Same difference.
That's what I thought, yeah.
As long as they're licensed, it's the same difference.
Have we ever had to enforce the 14, 30-day ordinance?
Not that I know of.
And I think when we put that in place, I think it was more to deter camping on unimproved properties. But we wanted to give those who did have improved properties the opportunity that I've got guests coming up for the Fourth of July, I want them to be able to stay for the week.
Right.
But they have their own RV. That, I think, is the intent of why we included the 14 and 30.
Which seems reasonable.
Well, I don't know that the temporary use as a camping area was our biggest issue. It was the storage of it, I think, that created the complaint on this property is it's set up as a camping unit with, you know, the sides out, up on blocks and all of that and then it's being called storage. And so, it's being stored in the usable fashion. So, does that, there's more of a question of this, do we need to redefine storage? If for one property, I don't know. Because he's got, he's just fracturing over the one acre and the one acre allowed him to do that.
My understanding is that the reason that the one acre exemption is there is because of a councilman that had an issue with the boat.
And I think it was also felt that the one acre is big enough that it would be
Acceptable.
Less visible to neighbors because it's a bigger lot.
It's real hard to tell because anytime you drive by there, there's anywhere from three to six vehicles sitting out there, not counting the camper. And they've had another camper up and down, up and down, up and down on that property also. So, you know, I don't know how many people actually live there and how many are visitors and they could be visitors for five minutes because when I, you know, I drive by and I just see that there's six cars there.
I don't think anybody lives in that house on a permanent basis.
Could be.
I think that's, that house is visited on the weekends specifically and sometimes during the week.
Like a cabin, even though it's just in the.
Exactly. Yeah, the gentleman that owns it, that occupies the house, lives in Rochester.
There seems to be vehicles there all the time.
There's a lot of vehicles there.
All the time.
But maybe they.
They just maybe leave some, yeah.
But is that really something that is unbecoming to the neighborhood?
If you don't purposely look over there when you're driving by it, you don't pay any attention to it.
Exactly.
It's not really the huge issue. Like I say, if you were right next door, maybe it could be, but to anybody else, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't seem to be a place with a lot of noise, at least I haven't heard of that.
So, the question for us is, do we want to change any ordinances here? The issue for us isn't necessarily this particular problem or issue.
Do you want to, do you want to change an ordinance to prohibit this?
Storage.
Storage and/or limited camping?
Thank you.
In the, in the real issue, if you do that, what are the unintended consequences for a lot of other folks within the community?
Drive around, you see several of them around.
Yeah, we'll definitely get a full room.
There's a lot of people that have got boats or campers that they are storing on their, on their property. You're right, you go after one guy and you've angered a whole lot.
But it came to our, it came to our attention because of a complaint, right?
Right. It was, and the complaint was made to the building inspector. We haven't heard that complaint over since that time. But even, even though we got a complaint, we've investigated it and we've basically found that there are some, some ways for that activity to happen.
Well, the question I'll pose is, do we want to make any changes that would impact this?
I would say not at this time.
I would agree.
So, do you wait for the next tax?
It's not a big issue or maybe if it gets to be a bigger issue, then we need to address it.
I think we have a consensus that we're not prepared to change in anything because of this.
We can readdress it again if we start to hear from a lot of other people.
It becomes a bigger issue.
Sounds like something the City Council needs to look at.
Are we getting close to it?
That's good advice with the planning commission.
Well, that's the question I was going to ask. It seems like the, well, the option then would be the enforcement of the existing ordinance, right? That this person is carrying on camping beyond 14 and 30 days.
But we don't know that they are. So, what are you going to enforce?
That's why, that's why I'm looking at Jerry and Joe.
Well, that's our, from a SNAP standpoint, that's our dilemma is that we really, you know, even though somebody has a complaint about something. So, we look in the ordinance to try to find something that says, okay, you can't do this. But when we find that there is nothing in the ordinance, we're disappointing the complainant because we're not enforcing his whim or wills or wishes. So, we have to rely on what's in the ordinance.
And if it's occurring on weekends, they may not be exceeding the 30 days.
You know, when I first contacted the gentleman, he assured me that he would not go past the 14 and 30.
Wink, wink.
You know, and if it's still an issue, let's bring him in, let's, you know, let's grill him and, but is it an issue?
I think not one complaint. That doesn't constitute a problem for me. We'll move on to others, correct? Yeah, and, you know, I, I just wanted to remind you that I committed us to continue that discussion. And looking back at the minutes, Mike was, was kind of thinking that was a good idea also, that we, we look at or discuss this in light of that R3 zone. Jerry?
And this is again, one request to do something different than what is allowed in the, in the neighborhood. Back in, I think it was about 2013, we, we had a hole to do about whether to allow rentals in an R3 zone. And that centered around this area right south of City Hall. And at the time, after going through conditional use permits for vacation rentals and all that kind of stuff, the council and, and planning commission decided that vacation rentals would no longer be allowed in our three, basically residential neighborhoods. That the vacation rental should happen in the R4s and the resort commercials. I think that's part of the discussion is whether that's a legitimate philosophy. I think the other part of the discussion might be the folks that talked about buying this piece of property and renting it, even though it had been rented in the past, it hadn't continued, so therefore it was no longer capable of being rented as vacation. Maybe you should be looking at that area that's there and is the R3 zoning appropriate in that area? If you want to allow rentals up there, you probably should be dealing with a rezoning of the, of the property.
So, you're talking about the historic?
Yes, that historic.
And maybe do resort commercial.
Yeah. Thinking that whole area of those little cabins and whatever. I caution you though, that one of the issues is going to be parking in that area and, you know, the fact that it was an original resort and mom and pop and the family all came up in the station wagon and, and today, mom and pop and the family come up in individual cars. And that could cause some problems up there. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not the right use, but that could be an issue.
You know, the name implies commercial too, so you could have commercial activities. You also have to keep in mind that every, every cabin up there is a non-conforming use. So, we're going to have other issues revolving around that as well.
But don't you have a lot of people that probably don't want to see their, all their neighbors or a bunch of their neighbors renting their property? So, no matter which you decide, but so, we'll, we'll allow it in R3, well, you're making just as many people angry as you are happy.
That's the, that's the issue of conflict and that's one of the things that, that planning commissions are supposed to try to resolve or minimize conflict between property owners and land uses.
Aren't most of those units rented?
No, most of them are individually owned and.
And not rented out, really?
Well, some of them. They could be rented the way it initially was allowed there. But then these people, that's right, you were right, these people had quit using it as rental. And now they want to do it again.
I don't want to put the, put the question out longer than it has to, but you know, that might be a very good discussion to have as far as with the new comp plan being done next year, as far as whether that's a, that area should be reconsidered for some other land use than R3.
I, for what it's worth, I agree 100% that this discussion should be conducted in context of that comprehensive plan.
You know, I don't think that we should be looking at it from one request. I think we should be looking at it as what's right for the, for the community or that section of the community.
You pointed out too, is you get the rentals, you've got safety issues with all the extra traffic and parking issues in a neighborhood where the places are like four feet apart.
Not only four feet apart, the road is, you can't meet traffic on the roads.
Yeah, the road's only six feet wide.
Barely a golf cart path.
Yeah. Yeah, those are, and that's why I said, you know, parking's going to be an issue up there and some of those things are, the area is probably too dense for, for the times.
And you have noise.
Oh, absolutely.
And the new piece of noise now is, I don't know if I mentioned this to Joanne, Joanne knows a piece of property right next to two rentals is the beep of the shuttle backing out at 2:30 in the morning.
We've given up on that property. Total loss because of the use of surrounding property.
I sure appreciate it being a buffer though, Joanne.
Well, it seems to me, you know, we know it's an issue, it's going to be an issue. We should look at it in terms of the comp plan, but we should give the people up there an opportunity, however we would do it, to offer their opinion because they're the residents that are there. If we continue it as R3, I don't personally think it should be rental. If we open it to resort commercial, we could still put restrictions on things like parking. You can walk in, but you can't park or some such, you know, variation on it. Just for that area, I'm not talking about R3 everywhere, I'm talking about that particular area.
That's why I think the, looking at it from an area-wide standpoint is a better solution than looking at R3 and, and looking at putting rental back into R3. I think it's be a very hard decision to, to undo what was done in 2013.
I agree.
Okay, thank you for the discussion. We fulfilled our commitment.
I have one other item, sir. Sad to say that this is going to be Carol's last meeting with us.
I hear that.
Yeah.
What is it like?
We're moving September 1st.
Where are you moving to?
The Minneapolis.
Oh, I'm sad to hear that.
Close our house.
Personally, I have to say that she's, she's been one great big asset to me and this planning commission and thank you for your service.
Well, thank you. I've enjoyed it.
We've appreciated your input.
With everyone?
And she hardly ever hits me.
Hardly. But I have a lot of historical context with you, Carol.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that historical knowledge, Carol, is going to be missed.
Now, we're going to rely on Larry. I've been here a really long time. You're going to have to rely on Larry all the time, right?
It's 2011.
Wow. Did everyone hear that?
No.
Oh, it's 2011 when I first was on the commission.
Well, you were on the comp plan.
Yes.
Part of it too, so, yeah, very, good job.
Carol, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I've enjoyed it.
The commission and the city, but you know, you can't quit unless you find your own replacement.
You should have told me sooner.
So, we're back to recruiting.
Yes.
The former mayor is. The former mayor is really good at that.
Sorry, are we adjourned?
Yes, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Oh, were you really? You were waiting for that?
Joe, maybe they have open forum number two.
No, we don't hear you.
Open forum number two.
I'm coming up for open forum number two.
Oh, my goodness. I, I.
Sorry.
I heard so was the meeting adjourned, I apologize.
No apology necessary. Joanne Weaver, ninety-nine, fourteen, Weaver's Point Road. You know, we hear about complaint-driven problems, but most people don't complain. They think it's useless because things don't get done. We are not very good at enforcement in this city. Just take a drive down any street, try Weaver's Point Road. You've got things sitting out there that have been sitting forever, they're stored on the property, we look at them, they're not covered, they're not parked in anything. Pick any street in town and you're going to find a degree of that. And I personally have a problem with a book of ordinances that's this thick and the enforcement is like this. I mean, why have them? Why ponder and try to find the perfect wording, get all the valued opinions, when you're really not going to do anything that put it on paper and say, we have an ordinance? One out of maybe a hundred will come and complain. The same problem exists throughout the rest of the town. So that's just my comment about the situation. And thank you, Carol, I remember when you started.
Yes.
You put in great service, so.
Joanne, as you've thought about enforcement and your experience with this, how does a small city with a, you know, a small, minimal staff, go about doing that?
Well, first of all, you lead by example. Look around at what you're doing and what your own property looks like. And I think you have to allocate some dollars to enforcement. And you shouldn't, you know, it doesn't, it's not a public safety thing. It doesn't belong down the street for the officers, they've got their hands full. You need somebody who really will enforce it. And, you know, it's going to take money to do that. But I can remember arguments long ago, I mean, we are, are we still the third largest city?
Yes.
In Crow Wing County? Okay, that means a lot of us live here. The people who come and store, you know, whether it's their ice house or their boat or their trailer or their truck or whatever, they have ordinances more than likely in the cities that they're coming from, that they can't store those things there. And we should have enforceable or- ordinances and really, I mean, for the good of the people that live here all the time. It ought to look pretty decent, but it doesn't always look that way.
Reason point really has become a place where you can bring and leave your toys.
That's exactly right. And that argument has been there forever. I mean, I, just go down the street, a property that we sold, they took down the fence, the boat trailer's there, the boat's there, the cars are all over the front, it looks like crap. But, you know, it's their property and nobody is really looking. I'm not going to complain about it, it's their deal now. And I don't have to look at it every day, but like I said, go on any street and you're going to see some of this. And you're going to get one complaint where you could, if everybody that had a reason to complain did it, you know, the whole city'd be sitting in here. So that's just my two cents.
And some of the stuff that's being stored is being stored pretty close to the road, you know, I keep thinking.
Yes.
Who's going to be driving down there drinking here off the road and, and hit that camper on tomb, uh, and tip themselves?
Well, you know, if you take Weaver's Point Road, there is that one dip. And if you park a pickup in that and you are starting out down by eleven, you cannot see the pickup in that dip, it's so deep. And it's, I can recall when someone came out of the golf course, there had been some drinking, there was a car parked in the dip, they hit it, and it went all the way up to where that boat and the truck are now stationary items. But, you know, you can all see it. I don't, you know, I guess you shouldn't complain about something if you don't know how to fix it, but I think it's going to take dollars to do that. So that's my two cents.
That's, that's a really interesting perspective, you can't do anything.
Without.
Anything is going to cost some money to do.
Right. So there you go.
I think it's the city council issue though, more so than the planning commission issue.
Well, it's going to be, I would think, when we're doing the comp plan, that, you know, that's something that should be addressed again. Enforcement as well as apparently storage.
Yeah, everybody hopes that everybody will behave and this is the ordinance, we will do the right thing, but so many of them don't.
Well, nobody even knows it's an ordinance.
No, but you kind of know what a mess is.
Exactly, yeah.
So I mean, they, they probably realize that they're, you know, they're pushing the envelope and they put a bunch of stuff out for other people that will get.
Michael, you're not saying anything?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Sorry.
I don't know if I have anything to say. I know it's been a, a consideration of ours for a while of, of how to enforce it. Is it something that, that needs to be budgeted for? Is it, is, would the majority of the taxpayers be all right with it, with it being a line item on the budget? Or would that be upsetting more people than it is causing good? Could we do a better, better job of advertising, saying, you know, we do have ordinances, if you feel that yourself or your neighbor is out of a compliant, please let us know? And being proactive that way, that might be an opportunity. You are correct, it doesn't need to be down in public safety. Could we do, uh, almost like a internship for somebody going to school for city planning, to have them come in on a summer? Granted, I know it's only part of the year, but have them come in for a summer or, or school time for a couple hours and drive around and find out, you know, they'd get familiar with how an ordinance is written. I mean, I think it'd be good, a good valuable time that we might be able to do NJPA, maybe could help us out with that. So there's some things to consider of, of the pros and cons and how to budget it. And you could almost make it a commission basis for the amount of fines that you can, you know, issue. Person gets paid, and that's how they get paid, from the sales background.
Don't do that.
I know.
No, I don't want that.
I, I would just.
That's like cops who have a quota.
One, one more thing, I would just say, you know, look back when the police officers started picking up, it was, the program was interdiction. And they might stop you because you had something hanging on your rearview mirror, but being observant officers, they then found other things many times that were much more serious. And people complained excessively about that. You know, what right do you have to do it? And yet, time has passed. They know that the officers are doing their work, they may not like it, but the reputation for following through is there. And I think right now, as a city, we have a reputation for not following through. You get by with things around here. And so be it. You know, it's going to take time and it's going to take money. And I better let you all go home, you can get mad at me.
Well, Karen is going to cut us off with a two-hour tape recording.
Oh. Yes, I will close, uh, public forum number two and adjourned meeting. Thank you, Joanne.
Close everything, yeah.
What I bring, go back to is my favorite mantra.